Okay, I'm now going to introduce the moderator for our special session number two, Jenny Eberling. Jenny, if you want to put your video on. Um Jenny Eberling earned her BA in anthropology and religion from Rutgers University and an MA and PhD in Near Eastern Studies from the University of Arizona. They're an archaeologist who primarily works in Israel and Jordan, and she recently co-directed seven seasons of a survey and excavation at Jizrael with Norma Franklin of the University of Haifa. She's Associate Professor of Archaeology at the University of Evansville and Acquisitions Editor at Large for Eisenbrowns. Thank you so much, Jenny.
Thanks very much for introducing me. I am very pleased to open up this special session storytelling by inspirational independent scholars. And before introducing our first speaker, I just wanted to tell you all the goals of this session. They are to demonstrate how to pivot into other careers, both alternative academic and other professions, following the completion of a postgraduate degree in ancient studies and how to balance a separate professional career and family life while still pursuing scholarship as an independent scholar. So the way this workshop works is that we'll have many presentations from five independent scholars who will discuss their career paths for five to 10 minutes or so. And then we're going to have open Q and A at the end. So people will have an opportunity to interact with our presenters. Some of the topics that scholars will be discussing today include skills from ancient studies that were transferable to their current careers or job. How to balance, how to balance independent research with the demands of daily life, family, and a separate professional career. And then also we're hoping they give advice regarding transitioning from academic scholarship to being an independent scholar. So I would like to introduce our first panelist, who is Brian Smith. Brian Smith has a bachelor's degree in anthropology and archaeology from the University of Arkansas Fayetteville, and has excavated in India, Thailand, and Egypt, where he worked with the Joint University of Pennsylvania Yale Institute of Fine Arts in New York. Brian received a master's degree in fine arts from the University of Memphis in ancient Egyptian art and archaeology, and concluded at the University of Chicago in Egyptology. He is currently employed in the Graham School of Continuing Liberal and Professional Studies, teaching courses in ancient Egyptian culture, Near Eastern civilizations, and ancient religions. Welcome, Brian. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Jenny. Thank you, everyone, for including me and this fantastic panel. And I look forward to hearing from every one of you about your unique perspectives of where you got where you are. I guess to add on to, not much more to add on to, the biography that you just wrote, Jenny. I am from a small town in Arkansas, about 3,200 people or so. First got interested in anthropology primarily through studying animal behavior. I'm a huge animal lover. I kind of wanted to go into animal behaviorism. You know, why do animals do what they do? That sort of thing. As I got older, I realized, well, why can't we ask the same applicable questions to humans? Why do humans do what they do? Why do humans believe what they believe, make what they make, live where they live? And so that led me down the path to double majoring at the University of Arkansas in anthropology and archaeology. The Egypt bug hit me pretty early. So I did apply to the University of Memphis, Tennessee, spent two years there focusing primarily on art historical theory as it applies to the ancient Egyptian language and the conjunction, adjacency of ancient Egyptian material texts and what the hieroglyphic inscription says about them. So that kind of irrevocably connects the two. Then I got accepted to the University of Chicago, where I spent two years in the master's program on Dr. Peter Dorman, who to this day thankfully is still a very good friend. And so my current project and my current goals, I have been asked by the Graham School to teach, you know, upcoming fall quarter, and this is going to be on the art and archaeology of ancient Nubia. And this is a class I taught only once before with Loyola Marymount University in Los Angeles, that I was very fortunate enough to teach this class. I was recommended to teach this class by one of tomorrow's speakers, Dr. Kara Cooney. She actually recommended me for the job. So I'm really glad that we're able to engage and talk about these connections that we have. And really, in my experience, it has been not only your performance in and out of the classroom and your dedication, but it also has to do with networking, you know, reaching out to people, staying after class, you know, staying after a lecture, if you have a guest lecturer, staying after that lecture, ask questions. That's how I got to go to India and be a ceramicist at age of 19 with Dr. Gregory Pissel of the University of Pennsylvania Museum. After that, I went to Thailand, and at the age of 20, excavated seven human burials in a Bronze Age smelting site. About that time, that's, you know, wrap up here really quick, I promise. That's about the same time where I really started getting interested in ceramic material and pottery. And those of you who have ever worked in the field or know anything about archaeology, you know ceramics and pottery can be the boon and the bane of an excavation because there's so much of it. And so then I was allowed by the University of Pennsylvania Museum Yale University team to dig it a bit for four years and be the ceramicist for various periods of Egyptian history from the predynastic all the way up to the Greco-Roman. So linguistics, art history, pottery, ceramics, religious behavior, certainly, I'm fascinated by religion, kind of goes back to my, you know, earlier questions about why people do what they do. And a lot of that is dictated by religious and cultural beliefs. So, and Egypt certainly has tons of that. So, thank you. I hope I didn't go over.
Thanks very much. Brian, I'd like to introduce the next speaker then, who is Kyle Johnson. And Kyle Johnson works as a data scientist specializing in NLP. His PhD was in classics at NYU, and he continues to do NLP research in ancient Greek and Latin. Kyle started and co-runs the Classical Language Toolkit, a software library for ancient languages. In 2017, he wrote an affable guide to leaving classics. So welcome, Kyle.
Oh, I need permission to start my video, Jenny. I said the host is, okay, got it.
Got it? Okay.
Yep. Hey, everybody. Thanks for having me on here. I'm very flattered to have been invited. I share probably what everyone here feels is that this stuff is really, really important, this, this, the subject of getting out of school. You know, getting out of grad school, getting out of the ivory tower, you know, willingly or unwillingly, or some combination of the two. I'll kind of jump to, I'll be really brief about this. My background was in classics. I was kind of a middle-class kid from Western Washington, and I began studying Greek and Latin kind of on a lark in college, and I was just really, really deeply moved by the realization of how small my world was and how small the little piece of time of the, that I was, that I had lived up until that 18 years, and it just put a bug in me, almost a religious zealotry for classics, for ancient studies, the ancient world. And that enthusiasm took me, you know, probably most of the way through a graduate student program. And then about halfway through, you know, I started off at Reed College, a small school out in Oregon, Washington, and I did my PhD at NYU. And at some point, I kind of, I, I lost the, I lost the faith, so to speak. I don't know. I'm speaking this in kind of metaphoric terms because I suspect members of your audience will, will relate to this. And, and, and it was a time of great anxiety because I, at least I thought I had no usable skills. I had no, what looked to me like no work history and very little safety net or, you know, guidance psychologically or materially, financially. I did have kind of a hobby horse when throughout graduate school, and really beginning earlier on, doing a little bit of what at the time was called corpus linguistics, and evolved into the field that we now know as NLP, natural language processing, which is a very, very big deal. If you've ever used a spam filter or ever had an email go to spam, rightly or wrongly, you've had NLP, you know, touch your life. It's basically the application of statistics and computer science and, and linguistics kind of all brought together. I'm not an expert in statistics. I'm not an expert in computer science, but I know enough about linguistics to get me adequately, you know, to get me, to make me an adequate researcher and worker. So I, I began slowly practicing to become an NLP specialist, perhaps some kind of general programmer I had in mind too. I didn't think I would make it as far as I have, to be honest. And now I'm, well, and so I'm happy to talk in some detail about retooling during graduate school or during like, you know, one's early professor years work or, and/or retooling, you know, immediately following. I've got, I think I probably made more mistakes than, I made at least as many mistakes as good choices. So I'm happy to lay out those as well. And then if people do have, I know this is a humanist, maybe, you know, a language savvy group. If there are people interested in talking about NLP, natural language processing, data science, kind of technical, technical work along this line, I'm very happy to, to go down that path as well. So I'll pause there. Is that okay, Jenny?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we can pick up, of course, on all of these things in the more informal discussion later on.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I am pleased to introduce Alex Joffe next. Alex has a PhD from the University of Arizona, and he is the editor of the Ancient Near East Today, and he's also a senior non-resident fellow at the Beg and Sedat Center for Strategic Studies. His recent publications include the essay "New Models for the End of the Chalkalypic," and the volume "Transitions During the Early Bronze Age in the Levant: Methodological Problems and Interpretive Perspectives", and "Operation Crusader and the Desert War in British History and Memory," published by Bloomsbury in 2020. He is a co-host of a podcast this week in the Ancient Near East. Welcome, Alex.
Thanks very much. Can, can you see me? Is this working? I can't hear you. I can't hear anything.
Yeah, I can hear you clearly, so.
Okay, very good. Okay. Since this is an inspirational storytelling session, I will tell an inspirational story. The year was 2003. I had been, few years before, fired by a major R1 university. Let go, really. And I found myself in the fall of 2003, walking down the side of the Belt Parkway in Brooklyn, between Canarsie Pier and Kennedy Airport, wearing a hard hat and a vest, carrying a shovel and a bucket, doing shovel test pits in an area that I had already established, had been created by landfill, maybe 50 or 60 years before. And I'm a 43-year-old male with, married with two small children. And then it hit me. It was a classic moment. I am too old for this kind of shit. And that led me to, that epiphany led me to a whole series of, of directions in the aptly named nonprofit world. So I want to, in the spirit of inspirational storytelling, I want to express a regret. Not a day goes by over the last 25 years that I haven't deeply, deeply regretted going into archaeology. I should have been a lawyer, like all of my friends from high school and college. And yet, I met my wife on a dig 38 years ago. And everything good in my life, my wife and my kids, and a handful of friends, comes out of archaeology. So there's a conundrum, there's a contradiction, and you have to run with it. So let me give you my cynical, optimistic take. For those of you who are leaving academia, you have just left the most corrupt industry that there is. You have been liberated from the fold. That's all. And if you're considering how to continue being an active scholar, the first thing I have to say is, remember, you don't have to do this. If, like me, you're sort of stuck or addicted, and you like it, you like that, those ways of thinking and those ways of doing, then let me give you a few specific pieces of advice related to the questions that were posed to us. Are there any skills from your ancient, your ancient studies that you have found transferable to your current career and job? Not exactly. Languages are good, attention to detail is good, the ability to research. My one piece of advice is learn to write good and learn to speak pretty. So don't wave your hands around and modulate your voice, have it go up and down. These are very important skills. How do you balance your independent research with your demands of, with demands of life and your career or jobs? To balance your career or your work with life, you first need to get a life. So get a life. In the end, no one will care how many articles you've written as opposed to how much time you've spent with your family or being a good human being. Again, you don't have to do this. What you do have to do is be a good human being. What advice would you give to other scholars regarding transitioning from academic scholarship to being an independent scholar? First of all, your self-worth is not measured by how many books and articles and things you write. I've written three books. I've written 10 or 12 monographs about a dozen reports, 100 reviews, 300 op-eds. I've edited probably a thousand pieces, 500 for ASOR. That doesn't change my relationship with my family at all. In terms of other advice, marry well if you can, get a library card. Don't buy books. It's an albatross. It's a bad idea. Don't do reviews. Nobody cares. Nobody reads them. Don't be an adjunct. It's a sucker's game. You're playing into, again, this corrupt industry. Be yourself. If you want to do this, then do it. You'll find a way to do it. You know, be original as you want to be. If it's not fun, it's not worth doing. And and I think I'll stop there. So, thanks.
Thanks, Alex. All right. It's my pleasure to introduce our next speaker, Laurie Rush. Laurie Rush is a US Army archaeologist, serving at Fort Drum, New York. Dr. Rush has a BA from Indiana University in Bloomington, my neighbor, an MA and PhD from Northwestern University, and is a fellow of the National Science Foundation and the American Academy in Rome. Her research specialty is Native Americans of the Great Lakes. Dr. Rush was military liaison for return of ore to the Iraqi people and has participated in key leader engagements across the Middle East and Afghanistan. She co-directed advanced research workshops for developing cultural property protection policy, doctrine, and best practices for NATO. Dr. Rush is internationally recognized for her work on military education and operations planning for cultural property protection in crisis areas. She is a research associate of Smithsonian, a University of Pennsylvania consulting scholar, and secretary of the US Committee of the Blue Shield. Welcome, Dr. Laurie Rush.
Thank you so much. It's a real honor to be included in today's session. In thinking about the skills that I've used for my advanced degree, which as you mentioned, is in anthropology rather than ancient studies, for me, I think it's the ethic of respecting the beliefs and views of others and being willing to learn how to behave productively in the cross-cultural landscape. Alexandria is very hard to follow. And we know that many anthropologists fail to respect the views of others, but for me, I've really, really tried hard to apply those skills, and it worked well for me in terms of learning to navigate military culture. Becoming an archaeologist was a complete accident in my career. So my advice to young scholars is being willing to take even the most entry-level job if it looks like it's going to be valuable to you and offer valuable experience. My very first job out of graduate school was at the Antique Boat Museum in Clayton, New York. I was very, very fortunate to meet my husband of over 40 years at Indiana Bloomington. He went to medical school on a public health service scholarship. Our agreement was after he paid back his scholarship by being the doctor in an area that really needed doctors in northern New York, we would move to wherever I found a job. And that job was at the Antique Boat Museum. It led to an opportunity to inventory collections from the archaeological investigations at Fort Drum, New York. There, two archaeologists quit in the middle of the field season. So the army came to me and asked me in 1998, would I fill in for six weeks? And I've been there ever since. So I guess my advice is take those opportunities, even if you think it might not be a good fit. And of course, for me, it's turned into this extraordinary life journey that I never would have imagined. Having a wonderful partner and spouse enabled us to raise our family of children. And I was also fortunate in that the army opportunity came along after the, I worked from home quite a bit when the kids were really small, but they were school age. And by everybody pitching in, I was able then to continue full-time, hopefully without too much neglect of them. And, and then as we became empty nesters, it freed me to do more traveling with the military and take many more opportunities that the army was offering. How do I stay connected? The opportunity to work internationally, and I guess another piece of advice is, even if you never would dream in a million years that you could win something like the Rome Prize, go for it anyway. And, and now I stay connected with a willingness to travel internationally and by continuing to teach. I teach for the American University in Rome, for Donna University in Austria, and I genuinely enjoy teaching soldiers. So that has also been an opportunity. And even more important, I've learned so much from soldiers. And I guess another piece of advice would be, take, learn your lessons in the most unexpected places. If you had ever told me, a child of the Vietnam era, that I would not only be working for the US military, but really proud to be associated with the 10th Mountain Division, I might not have believed you, but I cannot tell you how much I've learned from the soldiers that it's my privilege to work with. Again, my anthropology degree also enabled me and provided lots of skills to be the diplomatic liaison for Fort Drum and our Native American Nation partners, Anandaga Mohawk and Oneida Nations. So your life may come around in circles, and so take those opportunities, get all the experience you can, and then don't be afraid to listen and learn from others. Even if I've learned more anthropology from young soldiers than I ever learned in graduate school, it's in, sometimes it's in their DNA, and when you get that chance to gain, to benefit from other people's experiences, take those opportunities. And a piece of advice that I would offer is if you get opportunities to work for the government, take it seriously. Have a look at USA jobs. You'll be amazed at the kinds of careers the government can offer and also the opportunities to contribute. I, my goal is to try and save lives on all sides by teaching respect for each other's cultural property. And I never would have imagined that I would have that opportunity. So with that, I'll close. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Laurie. All right, introducing our last presenter, Mitch Allen, who is founder of Scholarly Roadside Service, a scholarly publishing consulting company launched after he spent 40 years as an academic publisher, including creating and running two independent presses with an archaeological focus, Altamira Press and Left Coast Press. Allen is also a research associate at Archaeological Research Facility at UC Berkeley. He has a PhD in archaeology from UCLA and has taught that subject as an adjunct instructor at five universities. His field work has spanned Israel, Afghanistan, and California. Currently, he is writing up the results of a legacy survey and excavation project in southwest Afghanistan, on which he was a junior archaeologist in the 1970s. Allen's writings include two authored books, two edited volumes, and over 40 articles on archaeology, scholarly publishing, qualitative research, ethnic dance, and related subjects. He is the recipient of career achievement awards from four scholarly associations. Welcome, Mitch Allen.
Thank you, Jenny. Hopefully you can all hear and see me, if not, someone will know quickly. This, this project has always kind of worried me that this is supposed to be inspirational. When I can look at my career, it seems to be more like coincidence, good luck, and hard work to have joint careers in scholarly publishing and archaeology. But I'll give you the story, you know, you can decide for yourself. It was 1976, and I was at the University of Michigan as a graduate student, Near East Studies, and I had the grad student blues. I was ready to try to do anything else. What further exacerbated the problem is that school ended on May 1st, and on May 2nd, there was a Michigan snowstorm. And for a California boy, that was enough. I was, I was out of graduate school. Fortunately, I had an uncle who was in, had a small publishing house in Los Angeles, who had always invited me to come back and go work for him, so I decided to do that. When I got back there, I found out he had no money to pay me. So I started looking for jobs while working at a record store. Among the, and of course, publishing was on my brain, so I applied for various publishing jobs in Los Angeles. I applied to Penthouse, and I imagine I probably wouldn't be here today if I'd gotten that job. But I ended up applying for a job at, for, in marketing at Sage Publications, a large, was in a small, but now a large, social science publisher. They said I wasn't qualified, which was quite true, but they had an internship program. And fortunately, they did because I decided to take that internship at starvation wages, kind of like being a graduate student again, and ended up working at Sage for the next 25 years. My first day of work, they also gave me choices. And again, here's another fortunate coincidence. They said, well, you can go out in the warehouse and learn how to pack books, or you can share an office with a CEO, and we'll give you a calculator, and you can figure out how to, you can help him do financial analyses of the profitability of the various things that we do. Well, I figured, you know, working in a warehouse, sharing an office with a CEO, it seemed to be a pretty easy choice. And in fact, for the next year or year and a half that I shared an office with him, I had the, a, a learning experience about scholarly publishing that's the same as the first year of anybody's graduate student degree program. I did well enough that he made me his assistant marketing director in a couple of months. And I, and four years later, I switched to being an acquiring editor, finding books to publish, and I stayed doing that for the next 15 years. But what was interesting, and it should be relevant to those who are interested in getting publishing, because Sage did not publish any archaeology, I had no connection with the field whatsoever as far as my day job. I was a very good sociology editor, family studies, criminology, education, social work, you name it, anywhere else in the social sciences, but they did not publish archaeology. So I left my archaeology career behind. And in fact, what I became was a generalist. I could tell you a little bit about almost any subject in the social sciences at that time, and probably even so now. I described my job as being a professional dilettante. If you want to think about your level of expertise in a very small area, which is what most scholars do, this is the exact opposite of that. After 20 years, I got Sage to start me up in my own little publishing house that they paid for, called Altamira Press, being part of a, a corporate giant. Finally, after 10 years, that was no longer interesting. And I started all over again with Left Coast Press, which was run and owned by myself and my wife, who is also a archaeologist, by the way. In those later two jobs, I did publish lots of archaeology. I had the opportunity to decide what to publish, but I didn't for that first part. After, in 1996, I was ready to retire. I sold Left Coast Press Routledge, where all the books are. So, and so I had a 40-year career as a professional archaeologist, professional publisher, and I'm now a consultant on and off for various academics, publishers, and scholarly organizations. In the middle of all this, I decided I did want to go back to archaeology, and I rejoined graduate school at UCLA in 1984. It took me 13 years to get a PhD, as, while I was working full-time. I worked on the Ashkelon Project, and my PhD is based upon that. I had a very patient advisor in Elizabeth Carter at UCLA, who after 10 years said, you know, Mitch, you're just playing around. If you're ever going to finish this, you need to find some time in your life to actually write a PhD dissertation. I had all the notes, I had all the analysis, I just hadn't sat down and done all that. So I negotiated with my company, with Sage, and they gave me two months off unpaid, of course. And in two months, I wrote 400 pages. My dissertation was done, and I became an archaeologist. Since then, I've taught part-time at several universities, write occasional articles and make presentations like this one, more about publishing and archaeology, the links between the two, then about the research projects that I had, simply because this is an area Uh, more about publishing and archaeology, the links between the two, than about the research projects that I had, simply because this is an area that I know really well. And when I retired, I actually went back to this project that I was working on when I was at the University of Michigan, which was a uh, uh, survey study in southwest Afghanistan. And the third book from that is now in press with Edinburgh University Press. I never thought this as being an inspiring story. Most of the time, my question was, why are you doing this? And the answer is, yes, balance is very hard to keep. Um, you work very hard in doing both of them, but you also need a lot of help. I had a lot of help at UCLA with. By Dr. Carter and also the head of the archaeology program there. I had cooperation from my bosses at Sage. Who allowed me time off to do fieldwork and allowed me time off to write a dissertation. And most important of all, I had, I had cooperation from my family. Vida, an archaeologist, understood that I needed to be gone three Christmases in a row, doing fieldwork when she had two, when we had two small kids at home. The kinds of skills that archaeologists, that archaeologists specifically and anthropologists more generally have. Are really useful in publishing, actually, because I've described publishing as being an ethnography of so, of scholarly groups. And so all you, in that one anthropology, cultural anthropology class you've taken, pull out all those notes again, because all that stuff is valuable. Uh, studying the cultural lack of academics, asking dumb questions about social workers and what they do and what they learn and how they. Uh, how they read and what they read. Being an outsider, learning how to communicate in their language. Networking, being able to find out who the key people are, who can, in your case, as a publisher, publish books for you, but. Even those who will just give you advice on who else to publish, younger scholars coming up is all very valuable. Good writing and editing skills that you have to learn as a scholar is very useful. And in fact, anything you've ever learned is useful in some fashion or other. I took one undergraduate class in African history. And then someone came to me on a soup for a series on African archaeology. And I could actually talk about the cultures that he was. Getting books on because I had actually had one undergraduate class, and I actually had read the textbook in that class. For you who are, most of you who are of a younger generation than I am, the fact that you know how scholars operate in the digital age is really crucial. You know how you access information, you know how your library works, you know how these large data sets actually work. And those things are absolutely crucial for being a publisher, particularly in the uh, in the twenty-first century. There are a bunch of uh, uh, up advantages and disadvantages going to publishing, but we can get into that when we have our discussion, if you want to do that. Um, but I think one thing you have to accept, though. And one thing that it took me a long time to accept was you're never as good at either of those jobs, being a publisher or being an archaeologist. Than if you'd only had one of them. I will never be a great archaeologist. I was never a great publisher. But by doing both of them, I was, I got to be okay on each one, and I got to do both of them. They, they balanced each other out very well for me. And fit very well in my life. It may or may not work that same way for you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mitch. That was great. Thanks to all our presenters. They, this was fascinating. Um, I'm sure members of our audience here um, have lots of questions, so. To make this a little less formal than it looks right now, because I just see this almost solid black screen. I would invite our presenters to, to turn on their um, video if they don't mind. And then, of course, others who are participating in this workshop are, you know, invited to turn them on as well. So it looks like we're all, we're all together. Um, so when folks have questions, why don't you go ahead and put those in the chat, and then I can read. Read them aloud, and let's see how this goes. Who wants to begin? Or if you want to be even less formal, of course, you can, you know, raise your hand, jump in and ask a question, that's fine, too. I have a general question. Um. Let me just ask this first, and then I'll, and Heather. Um, I just wanted to find out if, um, just among our presenters, just to start with. If everyone here kind of went directly from high school into college. And if they did not, if that had some sort of impact on their decisions, maybe in the, in the future. I'm thinking like, you know, if people are sort of indoctrinated as we are, you know, we tend to be to, you know, go through high school and go directly into college and then what, you know, kind of thing. I mean, if that had any kind of impact on their decisions to, to go in different directions after that, after they have finished graduate school. I don't know if anyone has any. I have a high schooler, so I'm thinking about this stuff a lot and what she's going to do in the next few years and how she's not going to go into academia. So I'm wondering how, you know, if any of you have any. Any stories to tell there or not really? Just telling her to travel. You know, just like travel, go get experience, do other things before you jump into this. And then, you know, the expectation is that you're just going to continue on with it. Yeah, Brian.
Uh, to address, uh, I believe it was Heather's question, is that correct? I'm sorry.
Oh, this is just me, but.
Just you, okay. I thought it was a Heather that I didn't see.
Yeah, no, Heather's.
Okay. Um, yeah, I went, I went directly into undergrad, um, from high school. Um, and not to dismiss uh, my small southern roots, I just needed to get out of town. And um, I knew this is what I wanted to do. I, I knew that I had the marks in high school with um. Being an artist, um, being in AP English, being in AP History, World Civ, you know, that kind of thing. So I knew math wasn't my thing. So I did know that I had some good launching point in order to engage with um, an undergraduate program. And uh, that being said, a lot, depending on what you decide to major in, and a lot of people don't decide what to major in until their junior or senior year. Uh, sometimes, you know, that's up in the air, even when you get into a graduate program. You're not really sure exactly, you know, what to do. I would still say stick with what is more comfortable to you. Uh, none of us, I mean, we've already all admitted this, you know, none of us know everything about history or ancient studies or, you know, and, and that's to me, the kind of. Um, exciting thing about this field is that I'm still learning. I'm fifty-one years old and I still like to learn. I still like to read. I set aside. You know, time to do work for my classes, set aside reading for pleasure, and then, you know, change the litter box. Or go grocery shopping, or, you know, you know, the, the regular mundane daily things that we have to do. But yeah, jumping directly into undergrad, I'm not going to say that that was necessarily advisable. I think, you know, kind of going back to what Mitchell had said, it was possibly even more coincidental than it was. It was, it was kind of a match between coincidence and what I brought to the table. Um, I was able to go to archaeological field school and nap flint stones, learn that technology. You know, for kind of experimental archaeology, uh, got to work with the technology of, um, you know, early, early DOS scanners to. Um, scan broken bits of ceramics to uh, give an estimate of the volume and circumference of certain. Pots uh, that we were finding in the ceramic semblage of eastern Oklahoma. So I learned a lot of very valuable tools. Now, just because I. I may not have used those later on in grad school, but at least I'm aware of them, because there are people in ancient studies, archaeologists. Uh, social historians who do use this tool. So I think it's important to be able to understand what they're used for and how they work.
Thank you. Yeah, Alex.
Um, I, in the, in the nineteen seventies, suburban kids. Of a certain social class went straight to um, college. And in my case, that was a hilariously bad idea, which really was um, driven home after my first semester. When the dean um, told me that I would be kicked out if, if I had another semester like that. Um, had I joined the army, really anybody's army. Um, that would have been a much better idea, or gone to work on a kibbutz, or. Gone back to work in the factory where I had been working, or the, or the, one of the restaurants where I'd been working. Um, so it, I, I would certainly commend, I would commend the idea. To, to any, anyone, any parent who has a, has a child approaching college. And the, the utility of college in general is far more questionable today than it ever was. Um, and uh, you know, when I have a plumber in my house. They make a hell of a lot more money than, than I make. And that doesn't mean that they're any less intelligent or necessarily well-read. Or thoughtful than, than I am or anybody else is. So. I think we're, I, I think there are a lot of class-based expectations that we are um, victims of. Or we victimize ourselves, and those, they should be rethought. And the same thing goes with graduate school. And the same thing goes with expectations regarding career paths. In graduate school, forty years ago, we all thought that, yes. Um, we would be the ones who would actually get the jobs as future faculty members. And on a statistical basis, that really wasn't true. And it's even.
Right.
Far less true today than it was for forty years ago. And um, but the, the process of, of delusion that the institutions foist on you. And the process of self-delusion that individuals say.